I like to call this May council work session and regular council meeting to order. Would everybody please stand for a moment of silence? And let's remember all of those who passed away during the month, over the last two months, especially some borough employees, family members. Our tax collector downstairs, Ginny O'Donnell, her mom passed away, Virginia, Mari, Cindy Wade's dad passed away, Bob Rigby, Lou Catroci's brother-in-law, Teddy Wop, passed away during this pandemic time. And lastly, our planning commission member, Samuel Rosa, whose mom had passed away the other day, Barbara LaRosa. So let's also remember them, and if I missed anybody that is an employee at Bristol Borough, I apologize, and I will mention it at our June meeting. Amen. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So just so you know, before the meeting started, I, since I do a lot of talking, I asked council if anybody had an issue with me taking the mask off. They were all okay with it, and they said as they speak, they will take their mask off if it's bothering them. So that's why I don't have a mask on, and I think we're far enough. If you can see, we're spread out throughout the council chamber. Mr. Dillon, you roll call, please.
Mr. DeRaro.
President.
Mr. Devine.
Here.
Mr. Pezzin.
Here.
Ms. Cullen, absent. Ms. Rodriguez, absent. Mr. Corbin.
President.
Mr. Catroci.
Present.
Mr. Dijesepe.
Here.
So just so you know, Mrs. Cullen and Mrs. Rodriguez have some underlying conditions, and they want to be here, but they're saying, let's get through the May meeting, and I think in June, hopefully, things start lighting up a little bit more, and both of them will be back. So before we get started, I want to just try to update the borough residents and council on what's been taking place since, because we haven't met since March 2nd. It's been a while. So we were monitoring this virus pretty closely, and I put together a task force of Mr. Dillon, Merle Winslow, Police Chief Henry, our Fire Chief, Herbie Slack, and our Mayor, Mr. Joe Saxon. So we met basically every day for the first 30 days of what happened. And almost every day, we've been on a conference call with the county, Monday through Friday, for updates on what was going on. And now that the calls have been lightened up to Monday, Wednesday, Friday, at 1:00, so we meet. Prior to that, the week of the 9th, is when we start talking about how bad is it going to get, about employees shutting down the building, keeping the building open. So on Friday the 13th, I think, is when all the schools were closed, and I think Wolf said we're going to have a two-week stay at home. So we met Monday morning, and Monday afternoon, we decided to close the building to the public. So there were no, nobody permitted in the building as of 3:16 that afternoon. We closed the building to walk-ins. We had meetings with our staff constantly, all the secretaries. We met with borough supervisors from the street and highway to make sure that we kept this borough running. I mean, don't forget, we can't shut down. We're an essential part of what goes on. You know, you still got to run a police department, you still got to run a sewer plant, you still got sewer breaks for our street and highway department guys. So we had to keep operating, and the girls, secretaries, and the police secretary, everybody's been great through this whole process. Nobody has complained, everybody comes in every day, everybody does their job. And when the phones really stopped ringing, they were able to really start getting some stuff done that's been sitting for a long time, filing, getting caught up on certain things. So, you know, they did an outstanding job with everything. So, and then going back a week before that, right, the week of the 9th, the week before the 9th, we had a meeting with Lower Bucks Hospital, the same team that I mentioned, along with Dr. Manarino, who's an ophthalmologist on Mill Street, who's really on top of this virus. I mean, the guy, believe it or not, knows what's going on, and he's had a lot of influence on what we've been doing. He keeps in touch with us every day, and he's been a major help to this borough. We met with Lower Bucks Hospital, we tried to take more than half of the hospital, because it's empty, to make it a coronavirus hospital, with the surgery center for operations, and we were very close to pulling this off, and at the last minute, it got canceled. But it shows you how far that we've been, how much we've been involved with this. The other thing is, we're in constant contact with people from Grundy Towers and the people in the county again about, you know, it's a major concern of ours over there. So that's just a little bit about what's been going on. The other thing is, I know there's some concern about the street sweeper. Let me clarify the street sweeper for the last time. I put out three letters, and the reason I put these letters out, because again, we didn't meet since March 2nd, and I didn't want people to think, you know, what happened to our public officials? And every letter, I ended with the mayor or any member of council, if you have any concern, please contact them, to let them know what's going on. So the street sweeper, the town was starting to really look bad. So we're running the street sweeper, there will be no tickets. I'm going to say it again, nobody will be issued a ticket. There's been concern, well, once the governor says, you know, you could open up the county, some people are still going to work from home. We understand everything. We're not running the street sweeper so we can issue a ticket. That's the least of our worries. Our worry is about doing the best job we can to keep our town looking good and picking up as much trash as possible. I mean, there's a lot, there was a lot of cinders and a lot of things on the street throughout the winter that they were able to keep picking up. If you want to move your car, I would, to make sure that the front of your house and your block looks nice. If you don't want to move it, maybe you can go sweep your own sidewalk and pavement to make it look good. So let's talk about things that are still closed in town. So right now, all baseball fields, basketball courts, parks.
Playgrounds.
Playgrounds, everything is still remaining closed, as per the governor. We're not opening anything up in town until the time is right. Are there kids that are going to be on the fields? Yes. Are there kids going to be on the playgrounds? Yes. We can't police that 24 hours a day. So if you see something, it's not that we authorized it. If we get a call, we'll do the best we can, but the police have enough on their plate right now then to deal with stuff like that. Events that's been canceled. Right now, all events as of, I said June 15th, and we'll reevaluate it. As of today, I spoke to Carmen Ruiz, Puerto Rican Day is now canceled. So that was July. So it looks like right now, all events, including all summer concerts down at the Wharf, are canceled. The only events that are still on the table is African American Day, Italian Day, Do Up, and Bristol Day. Do I foresee any of them events, any of them events taking place? I highly, I doubt it very much if they're going to take place. We don't want to cancel something in September. If the governor gives you a green light, and everything is fine, and people are dependent, we need people to come out and enjoy themselves. So right now, and we'll evaluate that sometime in July, late July, early August, them last three events. And then there's some car shows and things like that in September that we'll look at. But do I foresee that happening, including, like I said, all the, anything down at the river has been canceled as of now. First Fridays are canceled until maybe September. I don't foresee First Friday taking place because of the amount of people it attracts, and I think once you even go from red to yellow, I think there's going to be 25 people or, and I'm hearing maybe 250 people max. So that's probably going to close all the events this year. Okay. When we close the building, we put a box down in the lobby that's always been there for sewer bills. So we, the last letter that I put out said the building, we're going to try to be fully open today. Well, that's what we were hearing on the county calls and some other things. Well, that didn't happen. So right now, the borough building will remain closed until at least June 4th, or until the governor says that we can open. So we're still bound by what's happening with the governor. So everybody's been using the box down in the lobby, and I think it's been working out great. The tax office, you got to give Anna Lyrissey and her staff credit for pulling off something that was uncharted waters, where the tax office was closed, and they had to get 85% of the taxes in before April 30th for the tax deadline to get the deduction on your taxes, and they did an outstanding job. So Anna, Ginny, Mari, Ginny Polyafico, and Andy Harvey, I want to thank you guys for pulling this off, and really, without a hitch, and it just went, it went great. Tony, let me finish.
I just want to, it's about that, about the tax. Did it get pushed back till July?
July 30th is the next one before, it was June, now they pushed it one month.
Okay.
But to get your credit, it still had to be.
April.
April 30th.
Gotcha.
The other thing that happened during this pandemic was Father Mooney contacted me about could he put a mask on TV. I put something on our borough website, and Matt said that any other church or anybody from Bristol that would like to put a mask on TV is more than welcome. You have to pay for the entire filming and pay to have it put on the channel, not to us. The money, Matt, whatever time it takes him, that's, that's his cost, we're just showing it. And believe it or not, it's been a great success in town, and a lot of people are very happy that, you know, Father's doing a mask now every week for the parishioners of St. Anne's and St. Mark's Church. So I want to thank him, and, well, I need a borough call, and her son, who's doing a lot of the filming for this now. So that's been another success that's been going on. And you know, we really don't know, we're in uncharted waters right now. Nobody knows what the new normal is going to be. This council meeting might be like this forever now. There may never be anybody allowed in. If anybody wanted to speak tonight, we were prepared, they were going to stand at the door where Merle is and speak, and they were either going to leave the building, and if they wanted to see the meeting, we were prepared to have them watch the meeting in the back conference room. So that'll be the new normal. The Fire Chief won't be here anymore, and either will the Police Chief. There's no reason to bring them to the meetings anymore. If anybody has questions for them, they could email them, and the mayor's here, you could speak to him about anything with the Police Department. But there's no reason to bring the Fire Chief back to a meeting in this, during these times. So I really want to talk about some special people that, you don't realize what it is to be here three, four, five hours a day some days. And I don't think anybody leading this task force, task force is more important than Merle Winslow. I mean, Merle, we can't, I personally know what you do every day, the forms you got to fill out, and the money, trying to get reimbursement for the borough, and everything that's going on. I mean, this guy's remarkable, and we couldn't do it without him. And our Police Chief has been outstanding, giving us updates on what's going on. Our Fire Chief, Mr. Slack, is, you know, the guy's over 50 years of dedicated service to this town, and what he's been doing, they're still running calls, they're still saving people's lives, and so I want to thank him and our mayor for, for being here every day, and our borough manager, who, you know, we told him, Jim, you don't need to come in every day. I mean, you know, you're not a spring chicken. But he elected to come in, and, you know, I thank him. The other thing is our first responders, our Police Department and paramedics and everybody else. You know, I said before that I am the president of the Bucks County Rescue Squad, and dealing with that every day, talking with the chief there and the people there to make sure our squads are on the road, and make sure everybody's safe with this virus. It's, it's a major undertaking right now, but I'm honored to do it, and I want to thank them for the time they're spending away from their family, because some of them can't go home, or some of them are quarantined, and, you know, are dealing with a lot of stuff at the rescue squad. So I want to thank them for, you know, the job they're doing. All right. And finally, if you see on the agenda about there's some hiring tonight. So last time we met in March, there were some issues about the union contract that we had to send our part-time employees home, or they had to be hired full-time. The Borough Council took a position that we're not hiring full-time unless we can get part-time employees. That's been a two-and-a-half-year saga about what's going on. So during this pandemic, we, we tried to work it out. They were supposed to go home at a certain day, and I think in the last executive session that we discussed, I think Mr. Devine, you even said, if you guys can work it out, work it out. If you can't, I understand, but we're not hiring anybody unless we get the part-time help.
Yeah, well, that definitely is not what I said, so.
All right, well, anyway. So anyway, I had meetings with the union, myself, no other council was involved at this point. We went back and forth, and we came up with an addendum to the new contract that says we will hire the two part-time employees that we have, and in return for that, we'll maintain a 15-man, which we have now, staff between secretaries and street, highway, and sewer employees. And in return, we could hire as many part-time employees as we need. I don't foresee us hiring more than one or two, hopefully, I mean, you know, unless something changes. And I think that the borough and the union worked out an agreement that benefits everybody, in my opinion. We then had an employee that retired during this whole thing, which our sewer secretary retired, and we were able to do some interviews and hire, she's on the agenda tonight also to be hired with this, with the other two people. And I think the manager feels that these two girls, the one that we're replacing that was here, and Mara, who's been here, is an asset to the borough, and they're coming in under the new pay scale, which is a good thing for the borough. So I don't know if anybody's got any questions on that, but I'm going to go through. Let me just look one more. I know I've been talking for a while. So if people go on the TV channel or on the borough website, I'll try to keep updating everybody with a letter every two or three weeks to let everybody know what's going on. And also during this shutdown, and the interest rates dropped dramatically, the manager was able to refinance the ice rink and liquid fuel bonds that we have out there at no cost to refinance, just by lowering the rate, and we were able to save $150,000 on both bonds, nothing, and they still mature on '25 and '26. So it shows you that, you know, why this borough keeps operating, and we keep doing what we have to do to do the right thing. So that's a savings of $150,000 that we took advantage of soon as these interest rates went. What's it, Jim, zero what?
0.79%, so under 1%.
1%.
Unbelievable.
So, all right. So since Greg, you and Michael sitting out in left field, do you have anything?
Yeah. First, you know, I wanted to reiterate some of what you said. First of all, Council President Dijesepe, I did want to thank you. I know, you know, you've been thanking a lot of people on this task force, and rightfully so. But I know for a fact, and just kind of give me some calls, asking for some updates, how active you have been. Oh, sorry.
Good talking with you. Great.
Yes.
Okay.
If you just hold it there. I know how active you have been, and, you know, it is appreciated. I know we're all kind of looking to the governor and to the president for leadership, but we can't forget what our presence does for the people in this area. And with, with that, I did want to take a moment, I don't usually like to, in this forum, delve into kind of the national political fray, but, you know, there is a debate going on right now about whether or not there should be federal funding that somehow finds its way to help state and local governments, you know, not just businesses and other people that are going to need help throughout this. And I do think that, that people should start paying attention to that, especially in, in small towns like our own, because while we might not see the effects of that immediately, if, if things aren't done, I fully believe that we will see the effects of that at some point in time when it comes to our own finances and our own budget. No one could have prepared for the, how serious this event was, was going to be, I think. You know, I think we could have prepared for emergencies like this, but to this degree, I don't think so. So I would like to advocate for, for you out there that are watching, that at least kind of zero in on that and formulate your own opinions, but it is going to impact our state and local governments. There are different rules that state and local governments have to operate by when it comes to budgeting than the federal government does, and the federal government does have a little more leeway to, to help with that. So, so I'm just going to give that a little plug, and maybe, you know, poke your congressman or your, you know, your representatives to, to get behind something of that sort. I also want to really reiterate first and foremost just how, you know, not enough can be said, obviously, about our first responders. This is, this, this whole event, I think, has changed a lot of our perspective on the world, a lot of perspective on what's important and what's not important, and the fact that we are in a very small, tight-knit community where, you know, we might have our differences from time to time, but, you know, doesn't matter who it is. There's a lot of people out there that are putting their life on the line every day to keep people safe, and, and we really, really appreciate that. I would then like to take one last instance here, too, to advocate for a few other groups as well. You know, first and foremost, it's people's health. That, that is what is most important, you know, and, and my wife owns a small business. There's a lot of small business owners in here, but I do understand the governor's perspective, and that is, let's get people healthy first, and then let's figure out what happens there. But with that in mind, I think never have organizations like the Bristol Borough Business Association, Raising the Bar, the Chamber of Commerce, Visit Bucks County, these organizations are going to be the lifeblood for a lot of these small businesses who don't have the resources that a lot of the big businesses do to get through this. So I just want everyone to think about that and consider that when they're, you know, when these groups are out there plugging away, really trying to help people in small-town communities like this get through it. So, you know, we're going to need their help. We're, small business owners everywhere are going to need everybody's help. Health is the biggest and most significant thing, and if I could say one more thing, at the risk of sounding self-serving, and I get that, you know, that's just kind of the nature of the beast sometimes when you're a small town, and you have people that are on council that also own small businesses. I think it is incumbent upon this council to be as, and I'm not just talking about for, for restaurants, I'm talking about for every kind of business that employs people in this town. They're in an emergency, they are struggling, and I know we can't provide financial help, but we can certainly provide tools, I think, that will be most helpful for many of these businesses moving forward. I just think, you know, people are going to be thinking outside the box, and I do think we need to hear different ideas as they come forward, that, you know, that could help not just the vibrancy of businesses, but town. You know, we're, we're getting hit hard, right? We're getting beat up. We have a lot of family and friends who've been hit by this, and that is the biggest tragedy of the whole thing. And then after that, you know, we are going to, when the dust settles, we're going to wake up and realize, you know, we were really moving in a great direction, and I think we still can, but this thing's going to hit everybody hard economically at some point in time as well. So, so that's really all I have. I know it's kind of generic. As we move forward, obviously, we'll get our feet under us about, you know, I was going to ask some questions about, like, are we back to normal with inspections? Are we back to normal?
Yeah, I want to touch on a couple things once you're done.
That, that was basically my question, is are we, what's our game plan with inspections?
So this, Steph, the girl that's been, the girl, the third girl that we want to hire tonight, Stephanie, has been around the borough for seven years now. I didn't even know it. The manager's been working with her for seven years. She helps Angie with certain things at the rink and different things like that, but she knows the inspection department, she knows the sewer, she's working with the sewer. It's the first time that, I don't know, Carol's in her 13 years, that Maria Yezzi was able to put the sewer bills out on her own with some help from a couple other people. She did an outstanding job, the sewer bills went out, nobody, there was no glitch, so that happened. We're not doing inspections. I think John won't go into somebody's house, but.
Understood.
We're getting them all lined up for rental inspection, so once we can get in, the building inspections department is now, now that Wolf said on the fourth, construction could begin, we start accepting permit applications the week before for Sally to review. If it's, let's say somebody's putting in a heater, that may be something that they'll inspect after this pandemic is over.
Right.
If it's something that they're doing electrical or some kind of safety issues or an addition, they're going to have to go do the inspection. So I think what they're saying is, when she notifies them that the permit is ready, based on the permit, she will let them know what the process is for inspections. Some will get inspected now, some won't get inspected right now, but.
So structural stuff will obviously be inspected.
Right. Anything that has to be done, we'll do.
Right.
The other thing is, when we shut the borough down, the first thing we also did was try to secure gloves, masks, gowns, disinfected equipment. We have a, the chief went all the way into Tom's, sent somebody to Tom's River for a 55-gallon jug of a drum of chemical with a fogger that we fogged, Kevin, every, every day, fogs all the police cars, the borough trucks are fogged. He comes into this building and fogs all the door handles, and we, we have it down right now. I mean, it took a while, but to show you, like, from not knowing anything, and we're all sitting here to where we are today, it's a well-oiled machine. Johnny Driscoll today put up Plexiglas in the tax office, because we were hoping to open today, but, I mean, that's secure, the window up here is secure for when we open, the police station window is secure, so nobody can call for anything to go through the, the opening in the window. So we're prepared. We have enough disinfected here, we have everything we need, and Merle's on the phone with the county every day, trying to get more supplies into the borough, but through some people I know, we were able to get a lot of stuff that this borough needed in a quick, in a short period of time. So you have anything else? Because I wanted to go to the mayor before I went to council, so he can update us on some of these conference calls. Or you want me to keep going?
Yeah, that'll do.
Okay.
I think that's it. I just think it would be, the communique, I guess, for the people moving forward, I would think. I think people are, those are the kinds of questions that people will probably have as they start to move forward. It's like, all right, we're slowly getting back to business, so I want to, you know, put in a stairwell outside, what do I do? That kind of stuff.
We're ready.
Yeah.
We're not, we know people need to work.
Right.
And that's the main thing, so permit comes in, it's handled immediately.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So we're, we're good on that. I mean, I listened to a girl tonight from Doylestown saying how bad, you know, worked her whole life to keep her business open, and it's, she's another month in it, she said, I don't think I could survive. So you got to look at both sides of this. I think our county commissioners, I mean, Diane Marsaglia and Harvey and Gene D. Geraldo are doing an outstanding job. I mean, I joked with Bob saying, you know, sometimes be careful what you wish for, because you got thrown into this, and, but I think, you know, under Diane's leadership, they're doing a great job. I mean, they're doing everything they can do to keep things moving. It's, it's a major undertaking right now. Nobody. Nobody ever expected anything like this, so. Michael?
Uh, yes. First of all, I'll try to be real quick with this. I'd like to thank the borough for being able to point me in the right direction in the context. When this all broke, there was panic within my ward.
Take it off.
Everything from Grundy to just things like, what do we do? How do we clean? What do we do? And when I called Mr. Dillon and Ralph and said, I have these concerns, they said, here's what you need to do, followed up with an email, get in touch with this person, here's the contact information. And you had mentioned Mr. Harvey. He was excellent. They were back to me at no time. So I'd like to thank the borough for that. I'd also like to thank the people, the residents in my ward for knowing that they could reach out to me, and I was able to get back to them promptly, and it was, it really helped because they really were panicking. Of course, want to thank the first responders, you know, thank you, thank you, thank you. And the residents. I think the residents, again, have, it's a proven fact that people are taking this serious. They're doing what they're supposed to with cleaning and masks and social distancing, and thank God they're doing that, and it's living proof of how we're able to continue with a very low count within the borough. And then on a happy note, the hanging baskets that we do every year, we formulated a team that will wear their mask, social distance, gloves. They will be delivered on Wednesday, the 27th, which we always do. It's usually the Wednesday before Memorial Day. We still have to keep our town looking great, looking alive, letting them know that we're still here. So that'll be done on the 27th. I've worked with the greenhouses. They've advised me what they want, we told them what we need, and so that force, that task force, I guess, of the hanging baskets and volunteers has been formed, and I'd like to thank everyone for helping and coordinating that. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Louis?
I'd also like to thank, of course, you want to thank all the first responders, the restaurant workers, the fire companies, there's a whole myriad of people who have really passed on this. But I was, I want to make a special thank you because I was working with the girls when first decided they were going to shut the building down to the public, and just to see them adapt. They were willing to do whatever had to get done, and being back here a few times, they certainly made it, made it happen. So I take my hat, my hat off to them, along with the police and the fire companies and the public works people. I'd also like to thank Mascaro, and I think we should send a letter to Mascaro thanking his employees. Because the guys on the back of those trucks, they're out there every day. I mean, you talk about, you know, a job that's kind of thankless sometime. I go out of my way now, I usually did anyway, but now I make sure I say thank you to them or wave to them when I see them on the truck, because they're subject to a lot of, a lot of stuff out there in those cans, and nobody's worried about once they throw it in their trash can, it's done with. So I'd really like to, as a borough, either send a resolution to the Mascaro company thanking his employees. There's nothing to do with, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, it's not about the company, it's about the employees. I think they need to, Mascaro's always done a great job, I thought, for us, but his people have really done a good job. And yesterday, you know, it's Mother's Day, you can't go any place, you can't, you know, you're, and all of a sudden you hear these horns blowing. My wife says, there's a procession outside, and it's trucks, these big triaxles with Happy Mother's Day on it, and they're blowing the horns, comes down, comes through town. I believe it was the Copperhead and the PKB down on Otter Street, that group at least.
Right.
You know, I recognize a couple of the drivers there, but that's the kind of stuff that people do in town. It just, it just made a light moment, you know, so. I want to thank the people that were involved in that. I'd also like to tell the seniors, graduating seniors in town, that I know the Lions Club and the Rotary Club have extended their due dates for their applications for scholarships.
Right, so...
To June 2nd, I believe?
Yes, I think it's May 21st.
Well, okay.
Yes, but the letters were sent out, yes.
But I, if they haven't done it yet, they should really get their applications in, because some might think they don't have time because the original date is past, but, and they can go on to the, to either website to find out, get the application.
Contact me as well.
Okay, and if they, if need be.
I have the applications.
If they, I know about the Rotary stuff, so if they contact me if there's questions also, I try to steer them in the right direction. I had a question on the inspections, how we're gonna prioritize it, and that got answered. We're gonna take a new look at the wharf and the regulations there and the activities there, because the tall ship, the A.J. Mirwold, the oyster schooner that's been here, they love coming here, and other tall ships love coming here. The Mirwold is being docked or tried to hook for the, for the rest of the season, and their museum may open later on down in Five Valve, New Jersey, but they're not, you know, they can't afford to put this thing to, put it on the water this year. And I think the same thing will happen with a couple of people that we thought would come back with our tall ships, so. The wharf still seems to be a popular area. When you go down, when you look down there, people are there, it's a nice place to go, and everybody's kind of keeping their distance, so I think we're gonna have to revisit that.
I think we made a decision based on the mayor and the chief. Joe, maybe you want to answer about, we're not going to enforce. You know, if people walk down there and there's, you know, 10 people, what are we gonna do? We just can't start citing everybody. Look, we want you to social distance, but the chief can't police everything. If he gets a call, you know, there's 50 people, he's, you know, they're instructed to go down and, you know, not arrest anybody, just see if you can break up the crowd.
Right, and I think that's... Public service announcement, you know, social distancing, 10 people, you know, spread apart, that type of thing. Hopefully, it works, and if it doesn't, then we'll tend to...
Well, someplace to go and enjoy, enjoy themselves.
Can I make a quick recommendation based on that? I, you know, you just got me thinking there. The sound system, oh, sorry. The sound system down there, is there a way for us to put some sort of canned message that comes up every 10 minutes or so, just saying while you're enjoying the wharf, please make sure you're, you know, doing the appropriate things?
Something through the Lions Club or King George or...
Yeah, I don't know if Matt has any input on that either, because he's mayor. Greg?
Craig Whitaker.
And Merle knows the system, so I don't know how, it would have to be tape recorder, I guess, that comes on. The power, you'd have to time it off, on, off, on. I don't know if that could be done, but...
Do we use a streaming service, the music itself?
We have it.
Right, but...
We haven't, we haven't put it on yet, because I had it on once, and the last time, at the end of the season last year, Whittaker had their guy come out, and he readjusted the sound, the volume. So it was louder than it was, and then after that, we finished the season. When we turned it on this year, right out of the gate, I get a call from the King George, it's too loud. So, you know, not having to go back every day because it's on a recycle. It starts, if you turn it down today, it shuts off, it goes back on tomorrow, it's back up to where the level was beginning. It's programmed that way. So I just left it off until we decide, you know, how we're gonna...
Let me talk to Whitaker and see, or if you want to talk to him and see what's...
I'm gonna see Craig tomorrow, as a matter of fact. So I could talk to him about if there's some sort of service we can subscribe to or some canned messaging that, you know, if we're using a streaming service like Spotify or, they might even have their own, you know, and they might even have one that they provide for businesses and restaurants and Wal-Mart's of the world, so maybe we could...
It's a good idea, though.
That's a great idea. Sorry, sorry.
Meetings in the future, in the future. Can we, we're not sure what's gonna happen, but can we figure we're just gonna have one meeting a month?
Well, I, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't. I mean, there's not a lot, we've been meeting once. I even think we should maybe move the meeting to either an afternoon, a 3:00 meeting or an early. I mean, Wisconsin coming here 7:00, 7:00 at night when nobody's working. If, I mean, if everybody's back to work, then it's different, but if nobody's working, we can meet 10:00 in the morning. So why don't we do this? Why don't we say our next meeting is the first Monday in June? Please look at the Borough TV or the Borough website to find out the time and date of our next meeting.
Does the first Monday give Angie time to get the finance numbers? Jim?
All right, so meeting during the day is out.
Yeah, I can't do...
Matt can't do any meetings before 5:00. So is 5:00 okay, Tony?
Yeah, yep.
So maybe we'll just move it up two hours.
You talking about for regular calendar?
Just until this is over, maybe till the end of the year or... I mean, if nobody's back to work, there's no reason to hang around until 7:00 to have a meeting. And the manager doesn't have to sit here for two more hours and then, then go home.
Is there a way that we could do like a Zoom meeting?
I thought about doing Zoom, but a lot of the older people that really like watching the meetings aren't capable of doing Zoom, and that's why I really didn't want to be here tonight. I think we all should knowledgeable enough to, and I had several Zoom meetings with different organizations so far, and they work great. I just think that we gotta look, it's like the mask for Father Mooney. A lot of people don't go online, or they don't know Facebook, and so they turn our channel on, and a lot of the elderly people are really enjoying having the mask. So I think that's why I wanted to do it this way.
Yeah, I'm sure, I think Matt could probably do that, too, the same way. You know, a Zoom meeting that's live to the feed, so.
You know, just, I'm sorry to keep interrupting you, but it's just, everything gets me thinking. I agree with this format right now. I think we're easing towards that, but we do need to be prepared, right? In the event that some experts might be saying that there could be a resurgence. So maybe it's not a bad idea to have Matt prepared to do that if we have to.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Like, in the event that we have to go that route.
Right.
Jim, can, can you do it on the first Monday or is it second Monday?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, as long as it's in first Monday is fine.
I mean, if things are, things are really busy, we're have to have two meetings.
Well, I'm not...
But I just think that 7:00, there's no reason to do a 7:00 meeting when we're all home from work.
I just have one more thing. I try, I try to keep stuff positive.
Not in no hurry.
I try to keep stuff positive, but I'm really upset with the liquor control board. When they opened three state stores up in Bucks County, none of them south of Route 1. Matter of fact, you could probably throw stones from the three that were open and hit one another. Pennsalem's the largest community in, in Bucks County, no state store open there. Bristol Township might be the second largest, no state stores there. Bristol and Tullytown, we don't rank as large, but we've had state stores in our, in our areas for a long, long time. I think a message has to get out there that you just can't treat the people south of Route 1 like second-class citizens. And if they're doing it with the, if the state store can do it, this is just an attitude in Harrisburg sometime. So I think we have to get our officials aware of it, that they gotta fight a little harder for us. So they, you know, they really do a good job for us, but I think this is, this is, it just wasn't right to do it, and, and I think it should be addressed. And that's, that's, that's all I have.
All right, to touch on a couple of things with Louis, one was the trash. If everybody realizes Mascaro's been late or even not having to come back the next day, it's because the volume of trash they're picking up. Don't forget, everybody's home, nobody's working, so the trash is way more than they ever expected to pick up. So just bear with everybody, they're doing the best they can. There's two people on the back of the truck, like Louis said, and it's not easy. I mean, every house has, if you drive around, there's a lot of trash out. It's not one can anymore. You got families, kids aren't in school, so, oh, there's a lot of, a lot of weight, and I'm sure they're, it's hard for them. The other thing is Louis talked about the school. I just want to say that over the last maybe six or seven months, I have personally built up a good relationship again with the, some of the school board members. I mean, Dave Chicaletti calls me, I call him, we talk about different things, how to do things. I spoke to him the other day about a, using the school for a zoning meeting. We have a big zoning meeting coming up, he was willing to work with us. It's very nice to be able to pick up a phone and have somebody that you could talk to on the school board, and then vice versa, is that he could call me and I could bring whatever I need back to council. So I'm very glad that things are working out, and, you know, most of us are all getting along and working together. And the reason for that last call was about a zoning meeting, so while I'm on the subject, the library is having a zoning meeting that they have to have, and we, they needed to have this meeting in June. They wanted to do May, but we pushed it to June. It's probably gonna be a meeting where some of the residents are gonna come out. They're gonna try to do a Zoom meeting with some of the residents in the two blocks of the library. But we're gonna hold the meeting at the Borough Work Facility. That was Louis's recommendation. We're gonna pull all the trucks out, we're gonna social distance, we're gonna keep everybody more than six, maybe 10 feet apart, so we have it all worked out, you know. So I need the residents that want to come, there's parking there, and there's gonna be no issues for them to be spread out as far as they have to be. And you can't do a Zoom meeting for zoning because there's documents, there's court stenographers, there's so much involved that it has to be done in a public setting. So we're gonna make sure that there's social distancing and everything is done properly. And I think that meeting's gonna be June the 3rd. I think they meet the first Wednesday, and it will be at the Borough Public Works Facility. So if anybody at home wants to know. All right, Dave?
Yeah, I'm thinking people. What I notice is how important the people are that you took for granted. The guy runs the gas station, cashier, selectos, the people who put groceries on the shelves at Sam's Club, all the people that you just took for granted and just, you know, like, ah, there it is, you know what I mean? Like, they, if it wasn't for gas stations and food, I think it'd be okay corral out there. So I think they, they keep the peace and want to thank, thank the little people. That being said, Mr. Dillon, at Garden and Inlet Street, there's a stop sign. The white line has faded. I got two complaints this week about people blowing that stop sign when the guys are out painting. I would like you to repaint that where that stop sign is to make, make that stop sign more noticeable, please. At Garden and Inlet. And concerning the modification on the, the non-uniform unions, I have some issues with that, especially this time, and I wrote a little something. So let me get this straight. In the middle of a global pandemic in which over 80,000 of our fellow citizens have passed, where over 30 million, 30 million of our fellow Americans are collecting or trying to collect unemployment, where people are waiting in lines for hours at a food pantry to get food, where unemployment rate is at 14.7%, with predictions of it going to 20-plus percent. The only unemployment number's worse than today's unemployment numbers was back in 1929, the Great Depression caused by the stock market crash. And during this time, the non, the non-uniform union and the council want to give lifetime jobs with no layoff clause. wanna give lifetime jobs with no layoff clause. You can count me out on that one. Did I mention there's thirty million people unemployed? Uh, that's all I got on that. And as far as the three people that are, are concerned, I have no issues with any one of them. Maura Doherty, I know her personally. Steve Boz, he's been working for the Borough for a while, and Mr., I talked to Mr. Dillon about Steph Toledo. Yeah, she's excellent, uh, but I would not hire them on May eleventh. I would wait till after June first.
But Dave, that was part of the bargaining chip, that we can't hi, they can't give us part-time help, and then we lay them off, and they just sign a contract that we can have part-time employees.
I, I understand, I understand the give and take, but it, it, you, you know what happens when, when you put something in there? You get no layoff. What we're, what we're basically saying is, this is a lifetime job. I, we're, all the things that are happening in this country, where all these people are laid off, and Bristol, Little Bristol Borough's gonna give lifetime jobs out, and then tell the people, hey, you got a lifetime job, and we're never gonna be able to lay off. And you're never gonna get that back, Mr. De Zeppe, you know that, Ralph.
Right.
You, you never get the layoff clause out of there. It's, it's, it's in there forever. I, I, I understand the give and take, but I, I, it's too generous. I, I, I can't say.
Well, don't forget, Dave, they're coming in under the second tier. They're not coming in under the first tier, which is a lot less money, at least ten dollars or more an hour less. We had somebody retire. We have somebody else out that's probably not going to come back. So, these three people probably will be less than the two people that aren't here. And the other thing is, you can't run a borough without secretaries, so we have none right now.
We could, we can hire these secretaries in twenty days, but I'm not saying don't hire them. I'm saying hire them.
That's fine, but that's not the agreement. The agreement is, you either hire us with this under stipulation, or you don't. So, that's why we gotta vote. There's no hard feelings on us.
Okay, alright.
Tony.
But you know, once you give it, you're never gonna get back.
I know, I totally understand.
Alright, thank you.
Tony.
Yeah, um, yeah, I was gonna, I, I have some issues with that too, but I'll talk about that when we go over our agenda, when it comes up. The first thing I wanna talk about is the whi, white line on Inlet Street. I also got somebody that was complaining about that, said Dave covered it for me. Uh, again, the Garden Street fence, which is the same issue, and I'm going to continue to bring it up every month until something is done, because here's the problem that I have with it. The problem that I have with it is, there are pieces of Garden Street on the railroad tracks that are getting cut by Borough workers, and we all know who's getting the, the part of their, you know, area cleaned up by Borough workers, okay? So, if we're not gonna do that for all, and listen, I'm not here to complain about it. I've been watching for, I'm not one of those people that are gonna complain about it, unless it's not done for everybody. So, that's all I wanna say to that situation. It's not about bringing up names or starting any, whatever. If it's done for one person, it should be done for all the residents on the Borough, on Garden Street in the Borough.
Alright, before you go any further.
Go ahead.
We're cutting the grass for, somebody in our Borough crew is cutting the grass on Garden Street as a favor to somebody. That's what you're saying?
Are you surprised, Ralph?
Yes.
Okay, then, then the answer is yes, that is happening.
Jim, find out who it is tomorrow?
I have no idea.
And have it resolved immediately.
Or, a better solution is just whoever that person is that's doing it, just continue to do the rest of the street, and we won't have any problem. You don't have to call anybody.
That's fine.
Alright. Is Leo still working at the baseball fields?
No.
Okay. Can we get, Mr. Dillon, can we get some Borough workers over to clean that trash? There's a bunch of trash.
He, he was coming there for nothing, because he originally got paid to do so much of the work, get the fields prepped and all for March, and then we told him just stop doing it. And he came a few times on his own, knowing he wasn't getting paid, and, uh, we just thought that what's going on, nobody should be on the fields except our own employees.
Well, it's not just the, the field. I mean, it, it's the trash that's building up along.
Right, so we'll have our guys take care of it.
Yeah, okay. Well, again, I, I disagree with, I mean, that was part of his job description, from what I understood.
He's not getting paid.
What do you mean? He's not getting paid at all?
He got paid one time at the beginning of the season to get the fields ready and all.
Yeah, but isn't...
Since then, he's been receiving no compensation, and probably will not unless something starts up again.
Okay, so, it's his contract, he's not gonna get paid twelve thousand dollars this year?
It's not working. Why would we pay him?
I'm just saying, 'cause it's a contract. I didn't know if that...
He's not a teacher, right? Like, you guys are getting paid to stay home?
Hey, we're working though. Where?
Who's, I'm, I'm working more now, trying to learn a freaking computer, dude.
My daughter's a teacher too.
Yeah, I know. Alright, so...
Louis, I'll help him.
I'm sure they all do. What is the, Mr. Dillon, what is the, I know we've asked this a million times, but I can never remember. What is the handicap sign application? Is that a form online, or is it something I pick up at the Borough office?
If we got a request, we can mail one out.
Okay. And I'll send that request to you, or does that go to?
Send it to make.
Okay. Alright, the next thing I have is, you know, it, it's the idea that we talked about, Ralph. I gave, you know, uh, I gave Kurt a call. We played phone tag a couple times with Gilmore about the idea about having a central park. You know, the area where the base, where the tennis courts, what we call the tennis courts are, Chestnut Street and Elm Street, that area, I think that would be a, a, a great, uh, you know, central park idea. You got the canal there, you have, you know, that would be great for basketball courts, some fields. Even me, I don't even know, I'm not a dog person, but I know everyone, you know, people talk about dogs and stuff. I don't know how that would look to make it, you know, uh, appealing, but I, I just think that what's missing in this town, and, and again, this is not, I don't wanna make these things sound negative, or I'm, I'm, I'm being negative. Everything is geared towards older people, and it, those things look nice. The docks didn't cost us any money. They look nice, they're great, they're a nice little piece, like, they're all, like, uh, you know, they're, they're, they're great to look at, but we don't get a chance to really use them, right? Or, streetlights, they're nice streetlights, but people don't get to use them. I want something that we are able to use as a Borough, and especially our kids. Our kids, and as much as we, we fight about it, I'm not here to blame anybody for anything. There's nothing for our kids in this Borough to do, and especially now. This would be something I would love to get moving and going on, and, you know, Ralph, I know that you said that, you know, you, you had my support, but I don't care who, who takes credit for it. It doesn't have to be my idea, Dave's idea, Greg's idea. I don't care who takes credit for it. It's just, I think that that area is something that would be great for the Borough, and it's in the middle of the Borough. Right now, everything that people are drawn to the Borough only goes to one park, and it's just this corner, this west corner, Mill Street, and the river in Ratcliffe, right now. And I just think that having a place that's in the middle would give us the ability for other people to see other parts of town. Now, especially when we, you know, demolish Elm Street and Chestnut Street, or whatever that area's gonna be, and I'm not saying it's gonna be overnight, but it would be something to look forward to, especially, you know, in the times that we're having now. And I have, and this has been something that's been on my mind since, since I got on council. And I, I just have an idea for a name of the park that I think is, 'cause I picture it. And it has nothing to do with, it, it just, I would love to call it, Louis, this is, so, I would love to call it Gene Park. I would love to call it Gene Park, because when Gene passed, there was such a, uh, a sense of community with everybody getting involved, with the green shirts and everything. She was so young and such a beautiful spirit. I just think that naming that park, picturing that green, and just bring that, it, it, I, I just picture it years now when we're all gone, or we're old, or whatever, and our kids or grandkids are saying, let's go to Gene Park. I just, I just picture that, so, that's in my head. So, if that's something really, Ralph, that you would get behind, it would be, you know, I, I just think that would be a, a great addition to, to the, to the Borough.
You said your plan phone tag with Kurt. Have you talked to him?
I was gonna wait, because I just wanted to make sure, you know, if you're on board, then you can get done it.
I said, I know.
I know, I know. I just wanted to make sure, and...
I would just find out from Kurt how much he would want to do some kind of conceptual plan.
Okay.
You know, is it, I don't know, twenty thousand, fifty thousand? I have no idea.
Alright.
And then it's up to council if they wanna spend the money and, you know, to draw something up.
Alright. Alright, the next, the next, uh, issue that I have is, now, this is something on March second. Okay, on March second, my wife came to these council chambers to discuss an issue that she had with a situation with one of our, who now is our code enforcement, part-time officer, or whatever, who, in her capacity as an EMT, who she's, I don't even think she's a real MT. She said that she was a registered nurse, which nobody found any proof that she's a registered nurse. And my wife has had no success in having any meetings or any type of, uh, no ending to this ordeal, and it's been almost a year. She has got no response from the mayor, who she has reached out. She's got no response from Herb Slack, who is our chief. So, these things now, she goes out there, and you, and you know that it affects people. Now, if this was Greg's wife, or this was Lou's wife, or Dave's wife, or somebody else's close to them, this issue would have never happened. It would never, it would have never went to the extreme that it has, and then left on deaf ears. Nobody cares. And on top of it, this is what pisses me off the most, is that on top of it, after she speaks, two days later, she gets a letter in the, in the mail from the zoning board that's complaining about two cars that we have on our driveway, and those two cars, one is a truck that's her father's, and one was a Camaro, which was her father's, that had significant importance to her, sentimental value. So, we get the one off, right? And at that point, it was just like, and I told her, I said, listen, I'm telling you, don't move, I don't care what you do, leave it on him. But she's a rule follower, and she wants to, you know, not, not make a big deal about it. So, we get a thing. So, now, this is my wife, somebody's not involved in politics, somebody had not... Are you gonna tell me that's a coincidence? When I go around the Borough right now, there are so many cars that are parked on the grass, in people's yards, on wherever. Oh, I mean, it's blatant. It's blatant, and that's not the only thing. I mean, these are the things that happen, alright? So, you have that situation. Chuck DeMarcus, he's running for, he's running for council against Lorraine, right? And now there's an issue in retribution of him running against Lorraine. Now, there's an issue that he has with his zoning. He's gonna put a, a patio on, right? Which is not a big deal. How much money, Mr. Flannery, did that cost the Borough to fight that? With the zoning? Just a ballpark figure. How much money did it cost the Borough for us to fight that? To bring the court, yes.
Listen.
I am listening.
The owner of the property is the one who filed the appeal, not the Borough. They filed the appeal and required us to go to Doylestown. They hadn't filed the appeal.
What appeal?
The appeal. The zoning board denied it. They appealed at the Doylestown. They didn't appeal.
Right, the zoning board is in connection with us. We are the people, we appoint them, don't we? Don't we appoint the... Are you saying that, again, this is all, this is all semantics that you like to play? No, this is what you like to play. No, no, I don't wanna listen. I really don't. I'm sorry. No, you're retreating.
Alright, let me...
You're insinuating...
Alright, go ahead.
Tony, you asked him a question. Explain the process. Explain the process.
You don't have to. I already know the process.
We want to explain it.
The zoning board is a quasi-judicial body. Yes, council points that. Once they appoint it, council has no jurisdiction over that. They make the decision. If they deny something, the owner has a right to appeal. If they appeal to Doylestown, then the Borough attorneys have to participate in that, okay? That, that is a microphone, okay? Council had no input into the microphone. Council had no input.
Into what the zoning hearing board did, okay? And it wasn't Mr. DeMarcus, it was his son.
Okay, so, go ahead.
So, understand something else.
I understand that. And I ask you a question.
Okay, but, no, let me finish. Understand something else. The gentleman who owns the property built the deck without a permit. Had he gone for a permit, he would have been advised that he needed a variance, at which point he could have made a decision to either go for the zoning variance or not. He didn't do that. He put himself in a position where he broke the law, and we elected not to cite him as long as he filed for zoning. He filed for zoning, had his hearing, and was denied. Now, at that point, he decided to appeal. Borough made none of these decisions.
So, the, so the Borough has nothing to do with zoning?
Nope.
Okay, so, when this property over here used to be the old bike shop, when that was passed by zoning, that came in front of this, this board, yeah.
To appeal.
Yeah.
Right, to appeal.
Okay, so, we do have something to do with it, because when we're not happy, what happens with zoning, this, this...
Exactly. We have a right to do that.
Right, we have a right to do that. So, that's what I'm saying. So, if it's something that we didn't feel that was important, we should have told them, listen, we're not fighting that. We're not going, we're not spending any money for the appeal. We're putting it through.
I'm just saying, you don't wanna listen.
No, I do listen. Whatever it is, you don't like the truth when it comes out. That's what it is.
I'm gonna explain it again.
Now, listen, if it doesn't fit what you wanna say, then you don't like it.
Let him finish, then you can have the floor.
That's all.
You wanna belittle the facts.
Do you, he said, let me finish. Didn't you hear what he said?
Okay, good.
Alright, well, that's what he is. Alright, so, what I'm saying is, you don't like it, because I'm showing you an instance where if it's something that never, if, if it's a quasi-whatever judicial, whatever it is, it should never come in front of us.
That's not true.
That's what you just told me. We have nothing to do with it, you said.
We have nothing to do with their process and their decision. Once a decision's made, if they grant something that we don't like, this council has a right. I have an obligation to put it before council and say, do you want to appeal what they granted? You can agree or not. When the zoning board denies something, we have nothing to do with it, because it's the owner that needs to appeal. And that's what happened in this case.
But do we pay money as a Borough? Do taxpayers' money go into fighting that appeal?
Of course, because he appealed it. What do you want us to do?
Okay, what I want you to do is say, the same way, if he comes into the council meeting and he goes, you know what, over at the bike shop, right? We don't like that. We didn't like what they were doing at the bike shop. I don't even know what it was. But I just thought that it was very rare that something at the bike shop got denied in zoning, and it winds up in front of us. So, why couldn't it?
It got denied. It got approved.
Right, but, okay, it got approved. So, how does something that's approved in the, in the zoning board, which is quasi, uh, judicial?
Right.
Why would it come to us?
Because we have a right to appeal it.
You understand? I know, but what I'm saying is this, it's none of our business. It would be...
It is our business. If you don't like something the zoning did in their decision, this council has an obligation to decide whether they wanna appeal.
Doesn't it go the other way? If they, it doesn't go the other way?
No, if they deny something, why do we, what are we gonna do? If they deny it, what do we?
Because we gotta spend our money.
That was his decision by appealing.
No, 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 listen. We, we gotta spend our money. It's not the zoning board's money, it's a taxpayer's money. It's, they came in front of us, now.
But we're gonna have to make a decision if we...
Now?
We still need...
It goes, it goes both ways, doesn't it?
We didn't make a decision.
Does it go both ways?
No.
Okay, alright, there we go. Does it go both ways? Alright, so, that's another one. Again, maybe that it has nothing to do with politics, right? It has nothing to do with politics, correct? Nothing to do with politics. Alright, so, let's go to another one. How about this one? Is this politics or not? When Dave Marucci decided to run for council against Lorraine Cohen, do you remember this? You do, right? I'm sure you do. You've been around a while? Okay, so, when he decided to run for council, and then they turned around and labeled him a racist, a liar. They drug his name through the mud, right? Didn't, didn't Ralph go there to try to convince him not to run, and in turn, they turned it around on him, and guess what? He got into good graces. He decided to kiss the ring. He got in good graces, right? He deci, he got in good graces. He's now a member of that zoning board. Isn't that rare? Is that political?
I don't know.
It's just called, this is what it's called. It's called, when you get involved in politics, or if you do something to speak out, there will be retribution.
And I just...
I'm, I'm putting them all together. I'm, I'm putting them all together. And then, we have another one. He's happy to be, he's here. Mr. Sacks is our mayor. He had ideas that were different than Ralph's, when Ralph was the council president for, you know, fifteen years ago, sixteen years ago. They had a difference in opinion. Guess what he did to them? Cause he don't like it. Kicked him out of his office. These are not, all these things, who are you? You are the solicitor. You're not a council member. Did you get elected?
Listen to me.
Did you get elected?
Tony.
Did you get elected? I didn't ask that. Did you get elected? Did you, no, and you know you didn't, so you be quiet unless we ask you for your opinion.
I'm doing the.
No. It's not, you do with council. It's the council. Who is it? Say, say, "It's you, Mr. President." Go ahead.
Tony, Tony, alright, let me just say something.
Go ahead.
You know what's really sad?
No, it's not sad, but.
That in a pandemic, that this country, this town.
Let's talk about the pandemic.
That this is what you're concerned with.
No, no, listen, no, I, I'm concerned about my wife getting a raw deal, retribution for coming and speaking her piece.
That's why.
I, that's a raw deal during a pandemic. It took a frigging year, nobody got back there. You'd be okay with that, Ralph? You'd be okay with it, Ralph?
Are you legal?
Do I?
Answer the question. Is the car illegal?
No.
Then why'd you move it?
I didn't. My wife did.
But why'd she move it?
What do you mean why? Because she is, because she was threatened.
Was she threatened about?
That if it's not removed, in this many days, you're gonna get.
Why would you move a car that's legally parked?
Why would you send a violation to somebody?
I didn't send anything.
No, you had nothing to do with it again, Ralph.
I guarantee you.
Ralph, you had nothing to do with it.
And the other thing is.
Just like it had nothing to do with the trash on New Buckley Street.
Here's the other thing that you can't accept.
Why?
You wanna be me.
I don't.
You wanna be me so bad, that you must have my picture on your beaker at night, saying, "I wanna be him."
No, it's in my drawer.
It shows how jealous you are. You're a child.
Let's go.
You don't sit here and say, wait a minute, I have the floor.
You don't, actually, I'm meeting, actually.
You're not sitting here saying, Mr. DeMarcus was right.
When you start at the rules, what happens is this, when you start at the rules, you're gonna do what they want.
I got the floor.
I have the floor.
No, you were going, I started the.
You don't either, so why are you talking?
Listen to me. Listen to me. You didn't come here and say, "Mr. DeMarcus was wrong, that he did a job as a contractor, knowing he didn't have a permit." Why would he build a deck that is twenty feet over the variance? Not one feet, not two feet, not three, twenty feet.
I could answer that.
So, he builds the deck.
Can I answer that?
He gets caught, somebody turns him in, Sally reviews the process, and we have an outstanding zoning officer. She denies him. The right is, you have a right to appeal. He did that. There's nothing wrong with that.
Did he win?
He went to the zoning board, they denied the right. Now, he files to go to Doylestown. He has a right to do that.
When?
He, apparently, he did, but now, this council, now I'm getting back.
Who'd it cost money?
Listen to me.
Who did it cost us?
Now, I'm getting back to, this council now needs to make a decision if we're gonna appeal that decision.
So, to spend more money?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to?
Do I think we should? I think we need to protect our zoning board. So, my opinion, yes, we should appeal it.
Gotcha. To spend more money that we don't have.
Well, first of all, I don't know what it costs. It probably couldn't cost that much.
Like, give me a ballpark.
Have any idea what that could have cost? Yeah.
Uh, it'll be, uh, one brief.
No, what we just did.
Uh, there was one brief, and two of us went to oral argument. Uh, so, five, six hours between the two of us, a hundred and fifty dollars. It wasn't substantial.
So, the numbers that people are throwing around are layoff, I guess.
If you believe the numbers that I'm giving, yes.
That we have a zoning board that feels strongly about something, we need, and just the way you're talking about Sally right now.
Talking about Sally. Sally is under, listen, when you control every aspect of every job in this town, do you believe that that person could talk freely and do her job?
Absolutely.
Do you?
Yes.
Okay, well, then, because you're.
I'm telling you, I am so amazed, and I'm finding it like, starting to really enjoy it. How much, how much you put time into my life. I think it's great that you go on Facebook, people tell me.
You don't even watch, you don't even look at Facebook, you told me.
I know I don't, because I don't care.
You don't, you love it.
I don't waste one minute of a day worrying about what Tony Devine thinks, or any of your few friends that comment. It doesn't bother me.
I appreciate that.
But I know how bad you want to sit here and you wanna be me.
Then you don't.
It's a known fact.
Yeah, it's a known fact. Well, let me finish. Let me finish. So, let me finish.
And you're talking about moving cars. You moved the car cause you had to. You didn't just move a car.
Because I had to.
Move a car?
No, they don't, they don't, you don't think that somebody like my wife moved that car because she felt threatened with that letter? Do you think I would have moved that car?
I don't know why she would feel threatened.
The answer is no. I wouldn't have moved the car. But guess what? It's not me, it's my wife. Do you understand that?
I ex, to, totally.
Cause it sounds like you don't care, because you wanna turn it into something that has nothing to do with anything.
Every meeting you come here.
Because every meeting, you are doing something that is, needs to be addressed. And I'll give you an example. Here's the point that I'm trying to make.
This is great.
The point I'm trying to make is, is very simple. It's that Ralph wants to act like this is not a big deal, okay? I'm giving you point and example, point and example of how he treats people in this community residents that speak out. And, and he's, what he's saying is true. He really doesn't care, and he does find it enjoyable, and the reason why is, and I don't blame him. He has no shame, because he doesn't have any threat of anything. And I'll tell you why. And it's because of Bill Pezza and raising the bar.
Yep, I love it.
And that's what it is. Bill Pezza and raising the bar, uh, Louie, gotta go to bathroom.
Yeah, you want?
No, I'm saying, we gotta go to bathroom, we raised the bar. It usually does that. It stimulates, uh, uh, a lackatory response.
Bill Pezza did.
So, anyway, Bill Pezza, and I'm not saying he doesn't do a great job. But what he does is he turned a, a community group, which was a volunteer, non-for-profit community group, into a political action group, into a political action group to support Ralph. And it, right, I got the floor, Greg. Hey, I, listen, I have the floor, don't I, Greg?
Let him go.
Just listen. Hey, let me, right, all you gotta do is listen. All you gotta do is listen. When it's your turn, when it's your turn to talk, then he talks. Listen, do you want, all you have to do, can we get, listen, can we get, listen? Can we get Greg, what? Does Ralph gotta call a cop? Does Ralph gotta call a police sergeant?
You're embarrassing yourself.
Right, right.
You're embarrassing, you're embarrassing yourself. I mean, what's going on in the world right now, with people who care about so much as your life? And with what you care about is your wife, yet you are such a hypocrite. For what you do to people that care about you genuinely, you try, you show them, and why? Cause your feelings are hurt. That's why.
Right.
Because your feelings are hurt. That's why.
Mine aren't hurt.
No, you know what, Tony? You sit there and try to get rights out of somebody. You got it, Tony, you got it. You got it. Your feelings are hurt.
Where's the cop? Right, hey. Wait, don't you get it, wait.
You know who would never do that to you?
I'm on top.
You would never do that to you?
Where's the chief?
You would never do it to your family.
Where's the chief?
You're an embarrassment. You're absolutely embarrassing.
Where's the chief? Wherever chief, let me say.
I actually feel bad for how embarrassed you sound.
It's not, I'm telling you.
It is the status, if the status like ever seen.
Listen, does he not, chief, can you get it out of here?
The people who care about you, they wouldn't do this shit.
Do we have to go on recess?
Frank, take it.
Do we have to go on recess?
Frank.
It's enough. It is enough.
Listen, you got the cops for me.
He's worried about his health, he's worried about his children, he's worried about his grandchildren, he's worried about being a town surviving, and all you do is try to beat him off and lie, cause your feelings are hurt. That's why. You're an embarrassment. You're embarrassing, you're an absolute embarrassment.
It goes both ways, chief. I mean, I know you're in a position.
I apologize.
I know that you're in a position.
Right.
Is this equitable?
Right, just take it off.
Is this equitable? No, I'm just saying, is it equitable? I wasn't out of my chair ever.
I asked him.
I was never out of my chair, never.
I asked him to take a walk.
It's not equitable. It's not equitable.
I asked him to take a walk.
Alright, so, let me finish what I was saying, before Greg got so upset. This is what, and I understand that Greg is upset, because Greg doesn't wanna see what's really happening, right? Bill Pezza is a very influential person in the borough, and he does a great job. I'm not denying that. But what I'm saying is this, when you talk about, when you wanna be, if you wanna be the character police and talk about raising the bar, and doing things civilly, and being positive, guess what? Also, that means, Greg, that you have to point out what's wrong. When your council president steals services with the trash service, right? When he steals services, and then lies to you and everybody else in the town, and these council members that follow him so dearly, right? And he lies about it, and you guys continue to ignore it like it doesn't happen, right? You guys wanna continue to do it like that. Do you believe that my wife got that letter because there was a car that was parked on the grass, a tire was parked on a grass, Greg? Do you believe that that's why she got that letter? Or do you believe she got that letter because she's telling people what happened to her?
I'm prepared to respond.
Okay, the answer is, Ted, I want you to respond.
Frank, so I even work, Greg.
Here's my response. I get that you're upset about your wife.
Answer the question. You believe, Greg, Greg, Greg. Because it hap, because it, because this is, because the hypocrisy is your father's hypocrisy, and I'll explain to you why.
You're a hypocrite.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not really. So, here's the hypocrisy.
I call recess, guys.
My feelings aren't hurt.
No, your videos are cute, I said.
They are, oh, that's why you're upset, the videos. But because that's what it is, right?
Okay, whatever. I mean, they're really, you've got a lot of time on your hands.
No, that's eye move, you didn't take that long.
While the little world is short.
No, eye move, you didn't take that long.
Making your two little videos.
They were cute, but it's an eye move, you didn't take that long.
They are adorable.
But, let me finish before council president shuts, shuts us down again.
I'm not.
Alright, so.
I like it.
I, I know, I enjoy it.
Such an embarrassment. I want people to keep watching you.
Wait, do you think?
Listen, my friend is blowing up.
When you be, would it be embarrassing, listen, what's embarrassing? That you steal.
I steal, what did I steal?
You stole, uh, did you want to answer that? Did you order a dumpster?
What did I steal?
The trash on New Buckley Street.
I didn't steal any trash.
You didn't steal that truck?
Did it cost the taxpayers one cent?
Nothing. It cost nothing.
How did it cost the money?
I'm, we're gonna, I'm just gonna ask you one question. Did you order a dumpster for them?
Yes.
Okay, and they didn't show up, so their trash just took it, right?
How did I?
I'm asking.
How did I spend tax?
Listen to me.
Yes, they did.
They did. Why, no, that's not what the question was. The question was, why did, why did the dumpster never make it there?
Because there was nowhere to put it the day before.
But the day of, the day of, you had no problem instructing people to move a truck out of the way, and then get them out there and you pulled the truck in.
How did I cost the?
I'm gonna tell you how.
You tried to.
Ralph, I'm gonna tell you. If you listen, alright, this is how you, this is how you stole and you lied. That is, this is true.
I love it, go ahead.
So, you went, you bought a property, no problem. You stacked it up, and you, you told, you did the same thing you told other people not to do. That's a hypocrite. But there's no law against being a hypocrite. The next thing you did is you came here, and I paid the whole thing, I had to be off that day, and I watched it the whole time. So, I saw you back up at a New Buckley, you go down Washington, and I go, "Oh, I'm gonna have to wait a while." Cause you didn't get the call. All of a sudden, you must have got the call from Mascara. You turn around, you go back in, I go, "Mascara be here in five minutes." You go down, Mascara comes down, and then you are. You get out, you meet the driver, you have little nicies with the driver, you give a little handshake. You get out, and then you, then you decide that you're gonna supervise these, these truck drivers and these trashmen to pick up all the trash that you put out, and you're, I'm watching you do it, and then you give the guy the broom, and he, the guy, the guy sweeps it up. That was nice of you to do that. Now, that's not the problem. Again, it's still a lot of problems.
You're on that subject.
I'm here, right, so, here's what it is. So, now, what happens is, at the meeting, he comes to the meeting and lies to everybody about it. He tells everybody, "Well, that's what happened. I get a dumpster all the time. I had a dumpster for this one, but what happened, the trash guys got there before the dumpster."
Okay.
Is that what happened?
So.
I'm serious, is that what happened?
What happened.
Is that what happened?
Yep.
Alright, so, if that's what happened, why would you be there? Why would you tell the trash man, "Listen, let it go, I got a dumpster coming"?
It's okay, why I gotta worry about it? Why should I spend the money?
Because this isn't the right thing to do, you got a dumpster coming?
No.
No? There we go.
Ask you a question. What did that cost taxpayers? Did it cost taxpayers anything?
In, in your world, no, it did not.
Oh, in your world?
No, it did not.
Did it cost anybody, you had to pay any money for that?
It's just like, let me give you another lie. Let me give you another lie that you did. You want another one? Alright, here's another one.
I'm finding it, I love it.
But that's why, that's why I can't worry about you. There's no shame with you. That's what I like about you. Listen, you thinking I, I'm telling you, I'm not.
Keep going.
I have no, you have no shame. I respect that in you. Here's the other lie you did. Here's the next lie.
You'll ever do in your life.
Here's the next lie. So, then you go, and you say, "RNS didn't spend any money on that field. They didn't get paid, they did it for free." And I told you that RNS did get paid for what they did on that field, and you said, "No, they did it for free." I said, "I'm not gonna say they did, cause I don't have proof, but I remember seeing RNS getting paid for what they did on that field." And I had to.
They redid the fields that went out to bit.
I'm just saying, listen, there's a payment there, there's a payment there for when we were talking about for RNS, for like fifty, six hundred bucks.
Right, when they first did the fields. They came back several times, and they didn't charge us a dime. And that's definite, you can guarantee that.
Listen, I got the paperwork. It's not, it's the truth, and you.
Something else, just like.
It's not some, it's another lie. It's a lie to a lie to a lie. And I know you're enjoying it, cause you don't care. But let's leave it on to the next. Now, the reason why I'm bringing this up is for this reason, because, and Louie would understand this, Ralph doesn't have any shame. He doesn't care, right? He doesn't care. Bill Pezza cares about his reputation. And believe me, this is not something that I do in a way that makes me feel good. It doesn't. I bring it up, I bring it up because I want Bill to understand. When you become a, he became a political action group, that raises the bar with all those volunteers, he is what polishes up Ralph's image. And that's why Ralph loves him, and Bill loves him, because he don't give him no grief. He lets Bill do what he wants to do. That's the truth, and people don't like it. That's the truth. That's why Bill never comes up here and will admit it, that what Ralph's doing is not right. He's not raising the bar, right? He's not, he's not creating a, a, a town that's comfortable and building together. Ralph likes to, and he said it himself, he likes division. He, he doesn't want unity. And, and Greg getting upset, I understand why Greg got upset, right?[1681.24] But, and I'm telling Greg, just like I would tell anybody, I'm not doing that to be a hypocrite to hurt your dad. I'm doing to let people know and your dad know, don't think that I don't see through the BS that he's selling. That's all I'm saying. What he's doing, nobody, nobody would go against him. All the positive things that Bill Pezza's doing, nobody would go against him. He doesn't have to kiss Ralph's ass to get what he needs to do for the borough.
What you're saying is Bill Pezza does too good a job. That's what it sounds like.
No, no. What I'm, what, listen, the only person laughing is Ralph because he's doing such a good job for Ralph. That's the difference.
Yep.
What he's doing a good job, yes, he is politically very keen and sharp and he knows how to work a room. Right? That's what I'm saying. But don't tell me he, he thinks that Ralph is this clean-cut, great guy that isn't using his position to shove it up other people's you-know-what when they go against him. That's the problem that I have with your dad, period. Nothing else.
You didn't have a problem with him when he polished his rich.
Yeah, it's okay when he got him.
Wait.
When he got him in college or he'd still be sitting on Elm Street.
And that's a disgrace that you attack the guy now.
Here we go. Is that, where's the attack, Lou? Where's the attack?
What did you just got done saying? Do you listen to your-
It's called the truth, Lou.
It's your truth.
Oh, is it? So what I'm saying is, you don't see what I'm talking about?
At all. Who would you be today if it wasn't for him?
Is that the truth?
Yes.
No, it's not the truth, Lou.
You're coming about this just because you're pissed off because-
I'm not pissed off.
You and your wife, you feel like you're about-
Go ahead, let me hear it, Lou, because your wife got wrong.
You feel like you're attacked.
My wife got wrong.
You feel like you're attacked and now you're going to, you're going to bring it into anything that happens.
This, it happened here, Lou. I don't bring it up at the-
It happened here.
Lou, I don't bring it up at the-
The issue happened outside, Lou.
The issue happened in a polling place, Tony.
It happened-
This was political on your side too. This happened at a polling place.
Here's the problem, that you want to say it's political, has nothing to do with politics. She's not in politics, Lou.
You are.
What's that got to do with my wife, Lou? Is your wife in politics?
No.
Do you see me going blasting her? Would you, would you be attacked?
My wife wouldn't be at a polling place and attack, get in an argument with anybody.
Oh, you said my wife attacked somebody? Is that what you said?
Get in an argument with her.
No, you didn't. You said your wife.
You were attacking.
No, here's the problem, though. Ready?
Look, you know what?
The same thing with you. You guys, you guys don't understand. That's the problem. When you, when you want to deal with people that you surround yourself with, you got to take, you, you got to take the collateral damage that happens around you.
Yep.
Listen, when that's your best friend and you're going to support everything he does when he's wrong and he wrongs good people, guess what, Lou? Your image gets tarnished as well. And you don't care.
Tony, let me tell you.
Do you?
You know what amazes me?
I don't, I don't know where you're coming from, where you're saying-
I just told you, Lou.
Everybody's tarnished.
Lou, ready? Lou. Answer this question.
I said, Bill Pezza polished your image and you got away from that real fast.
Okay, let's, listen.
He polished your image.
I'm very grateful.
No, you're not. Because when I'm grateful to somebody, I wouldn't go attack him in a public meeting all the time.
Listen.
I keep my mouth shut.
It's called being honest.
Maybe that's being critical.
No, it's called being honest, Lou.
That's not being honest.
Listen, I'm going to tell you, I am grateful for what he did.
Dallas.
To help me. Without a doubt. But does that mean that I have to be grateful and ignore the things that I'm seeing that I'm not happy with, with somebody?
Maybe it's in your mind.
Maybe you should just treat him a little more respectfully.
If I, when I see somebody, I have nothing but respect.
I don't have respect for him on, on Sunday and then attack him on Monday because it's community, so that's-
You guys make things personal, right? I'm not, I didn't say anything about Mr. Pezza personally. Not one thing.
What do you mean? You didn't say anything about him personally.
Denigrating his whole personality.
Everything that he did is political. Everything he's doing is politically motivated.
Everything is personal. Everything you do is personal.
Is it?
Yes.
Tell me where. Tell me what I, tell me what I have gained.
What did you ever do?
I don't mean just you. All of us, whatever. When somebody tells me, oh, that wasn't nothing personal, I voted against it, but it wasn't personal. Yes, it was.
Oh, it isn't.
Because if you vote against me, I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about anybody who tells me what they do is not personal. Everything that I do is personal.
Oh, okay.
Everything I do is personal. I don't, I don't separate myself and say, oh, I, I can, I can-
You don't? You said earlier you did. Alright, well then, if you're going to be honest, let's be honest.
Why do I say, you're always saying what somebody else said.
Alright, listen, guys, I'm not going to keep this long for the next two hours. Listen to me. I just want to say one thing. First of all, even your own team came to these, Mr. Gerard and Mr. Ricchio, he says, sit in that back room, say, you're insane. That guy's nuts. I don't know how you, you weren't here a couple of minutes, how great it was. Tony Ricchio said you called his house one night and said, you need to do this, and he hung up on you. Dave said that you told him you need to get on board. All this was said in executive session. So let me tell you something.
Wait, wait.
Don't think that everybody agrees with you, that you're sitting here like you're some hero, that you're against Ralph.
No, that's not-
You are a jealous little child. That's what you are.
Listen.
Alright, that ends that. What else do you have that makes sense for the borough?
Alright, here's what makes sense.
Do you have anything else?
Yes, I do. Since you love to have the last word, okay? I'm going to take my, my opportunity to have the last word, okay? And, and most people that do know me, Ralph, you're not one that knows me that well, but, and I'm being honest, when I talk to you, I don't have a problem with you. Listen, you're the one, I- I don't, let me say this, I have the floor.
I don't waste any time in my life with you.
You do, because you listen to Facebook. You like the Facebook.
I don't go on Facebook.
No, you don't. You just know everything. You're going to sue somebody, Kelly Cochrane because of Facebook, but you don't go on it. Come on, Ralph. Who you, who you lying to now?
I don't go on Facebook.
No. Alright, so anyway, that's it in a nutshell. Greg, I'm sorry that you got upset. I'm just telling you how I feel. Period.
Okay.
I gotta use some bathroom. Oh, my goodness.
What's that, though? Who's next? It's such, he's so jealous it's a sin.
Unbelievable.
He did nothing for this town in nine years except cause problems. And there's no question, Dave, you even said that numerous times. And so did Tony Ricchio. So, don't sit here and lie back like he's, you know. Go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Well, having listened to all that, I know we've done a lot of thank yous already. I want to thank the residents who have sheltered in place, done social distancing, wearing a mask. Doing so protects not only you, but also protects the health and safety of everybody else. And it limits your exposure to the invisible danger of the COVID-19. As Ralph had mentioned, our government has remained open, the clothes of the public, all the services reliant, that we rely on every day. Police, fire, emergency services, trash collection, tax office. All of our employees have done an outstanding job in keeping this borough operating. And I want to thank them personally for this effort. I'd be remiss also for then also mention all the outpouring of support from groups and individuals such as Raising the Bar, the Community College, small business, who have put on small business seminars to help our small businesses. The Ochs Club, providing breakfast for school kids. Bristol Borough School District providing lunch and food for students and their family. And that's just to name a few. Additionally, our local restaurants, grocery stores, providing takeout meals. Earlier today, I was supposed to attend a meeting of the Academic Oversight Committee of the 21st Century Group, which we're all familiar with. Our largest fundraiser is normally in June, Jazz on the River, where the King George picks up all the cost. June 26th, as Ralph mentioned, all events are canceled. That will be canceled. We're also working on a large career night for March 26th. We've been working on it for three months. That got canceled. We had guaranteed participation of 65 vendors representing a broad array of industries from Philadelphia to Princeton. Several trade schools representing aviation mechanics, auto mechanics, beauty, and 20 professionals representing physician, lawyers, finance, insurance, architects, engineers, graphic designers, and a variety of healthcare professionals. And the intent and idea there was not only for students to come out and meet these people, but also the possibility for jobs for people in the community. And also recent, no recent BHS graduates. So, moving on, as I said, with Jazz with the River, this would have been our fifth year. And over the four years in putting Jazz on a River on, we've raised approximately $60,000 for educational enrichment, otherwise not available to the students in Bristol Borough. In 2019, this represented a significant portion of the $17,751 that funded grant contributions to the public and peripheral schools. Also too, we partner with the borough for the Borough Summer Camp. Plans are in development to hold the summer camps in a virtual format. More details will be forthcoming on this topic and format from the school district and 21st Century Learning Project leaders Stacy Tatum and Evan Van Schuyt. Also too, our last fundraiser, which is normally Bristol Fall Classic, is scheduled for November 21st. Of course, the same rules apply to everything else. If the governor still has everything closed, or the borough is not having events, then we will have that. You want me to talk about that meetings we've been having, Ralph?
Yes, please.
Okay. As Ralph mentioned earlier, he put together this task force. I had been meeting with police and the fire prior to this where we were setting up some concerns that we had, making sure that we had proper protocols. And Ralph put together this task force. I call it the Bristol Borough COVID Task Force. And we have a meeting at least the last seven or eight weeks, Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays. We meet, we take a conference call with the county. And that's 54 municipalities with county EMA and also county commissioners, county board of health. At least one county commissioner generally attends. We have discussed, we've had very big discussions on testing, who, what, when, and where. First responders, healthcare, healthcare workers, et cetera. And if you watch the news every day, you hear the same story. There's no PPE available. We don't have enough testing. These are all the same things over the last 10 weeks that we've been trying to deal with. Our county got caught in bidding with other counties for PPE. The federal government has said we'll give you masks, a million masks come in. I think we put in for 155 masks, or 500 masks. We have 155 so far. So I mean, and it's not the fault of the county, it's just the fault of this whole system from the top to the bottom has fallen apart. But we were fortunate. Different people that sit on this committee, it was Ralph could make a phone call and was able to get masks and, and coveralls and sanitizer. Police chief was able to make a call and get a sanitizer for sanitizing all the equipment. Merle, every day on the phone. Herbie, making contacts for gloves, making EMS contacts. Worked with Marty Lefitsky from the squad. So, these are all the things that, you know, come up. We discuss in those meetings, and I'm sure you've heard a lot of people talk about the number of nursing homes, personal care facilities. That seems to be a big thing in, in the southeastern part of Pennsylvania. Where our argument is, we're never going to hit what Governor Wolf wants us to hit on that, we'd have to have like 22 cases or less a day. Well, when you include all the nursing homes and everything in, there, there's no way we're ever going to hit that. I don't think we've been below a day of 100 new cases. So, counties, mayor's association, police chiefs association have all written letters to the county, which were sent to Governor Wolf suggesting that he's got to have a better method. Believe me, and I think Ralph and everybody will tell you, I'm not a big fan of opening up anything tomorrow. Because I believe if we don't have testing, we can't do contact tracing, it's going to be a challenge. We've worked so hard to get people to come to this town, and they love coming here. And if we just open the gates tomorrow, we're just going to be flooded. Also too, talk about food distribution, private business school, and this is all going with 54 municipalities on these meetings. At the end, there's an open forum question. They do a roll call of each individual department. And if you have a question, they try and answer the question. Also too, the commissioners are there. Dr. Dampster from the Bucks County Health has been on a lot of the meetings. When those kind of questions come up, they get answered. So, on a typical day, we talk about how many ICU beds, which ventilators do we have in a county? We have 88. We also, how many are available? Today there was 39. Surgical medical beds, 752 beds available today, 374. And that's kind of been the thing I think everybody would tell you in the, in these meetings. About 50% capacity in most of the hospitals. That's six hospitals in Bucks County. Bucks County's total cases, 3,922. Deaths, 312. Good news is, in Bristol, there's 24 active for a total of 49 and 25 recoveries. One of the challenges that we have, and it's, it just makes my blood boil, that we can't get information. We're not told when you have a case in Bristol Borough, where it's at, who it is. Right down even to our police chief. He, he has, he has made numerous objections to the policy that the county has that at least we need to know going into a property. Now, there's a system in place that they utilize to let the first responders know. But if there's five people living in a house, you don't know who the particular person is. So it's, it's a challenge, not just for us, but it's all the way from the federal government. Also too, the commissioners will take questions. Today, some good information that came out was that they're going to form a red and yellow task force, the county is, on how to make that transition from red to yellow. And also too, they're talking about the potential for small business grants for Bucks County business, for Bucks County Small Business with a $6 million funding pool. Not finalized, but, but they're talking about that. Also, yeah. The fire chiefs report, chief's not here. The fire board meeting for April was canceled. The, we had a vehicle, I'm sure everybody saw the Facebook post and saw the news. We had a vehicle that drove into the river by the gazebo. I want to thank everybody that was involved in working on that. Unfortunately, the driver didn't make it out. But it was an excellent working relationship with all the different fire companies and the threatened fire department divers and Rob Stone. All CO alarms have been distributed. So we have no more CO alarms. We still have smoke alarms available. The Red Cross Smoke Alarm Program, which was scheduled for February 2020, has been postponed. For the month of April, there were 12 medical emergencies in town. 20 fire rescue-related emergencies in town. There were three mutual aid out-of-town responses for a total of 35 calls for the month. During the month of April, there were 12 EMS responses. Two cardiac arrest or overdose, three cardiac arrests, and seven other medical emergencies. And the Committee to Investigate Initiatives to Meet Ways to Improve the Fire Department Efficiencies has been postponed as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. To date, general discussions have been held. Future meetings will be held as soon as possible. In the police department, our calls are down, which is not surprising. But there's, because more people are at home, there seems to be a few more either disorderly conduct and maybe some family emergencies. Sometimes it might get out of hand. Last month, we did 879 calls for service. Last year, our average was about 1,000, a little over 1,000. I want to specifically thank the police officers who are out there every day. It's a difficult and dangerous job. Our officers continue to place themselves in harm's way with now an invisible enemy. We're proud of the courage and commitment that they have. And I specifically want to point out our Streets and Highway Department, the excellent job that they're doing every day, as Ralph had mentioned. Come in every day. Through our efforts, we have the fogger, we have the disinfectant. All the police cars are disinfected, all the borough trucks, all these rooms up here, so forth, are all done. And that's, we're doing a lot more than I think a lot of the other municipalities. And we've made sure we have protocols in place for police department, fire department, for when they're responding to calls. All the police officers have been given individual PPE packets. And I'd say that's about it. I just say it's a, it's a shame. Everybody's working so hard on what's going on, trying to keep our head above water, trying to build confidence with the people. It's a shame we have to get through some of the ridiculousness we went through tonight. Thank you.
That is the sad part. Everything that's going on, everything everybody's doing, you got to put up with. That's just human nature. Okay, so we're done. Jim, you have anything?
Just a point of information, we've been advised by Aqua that they're going to come in and redo the water mains on Pine Street and Spring Street. So there should be significant work, probably in some time for that, but it's going to be major work over there by Aqua. Just have the agenda. I know, I received a couple of phone calls, a couple of emails asking me different questions on the agenda, but-
So there's going to be probably about 15 streets that are going to get done with water service in that, in that area. So just so everybody knows, in case you get phone calls. Alright, so does anybody, Billy, have anything?
No.
Okay, so we're going to, I'll find my agenda. Everybody got the agenda? I'll need mayor's communication again. There's no public participation? Are anybody out there?
Why don't you confirm that there's no public here, please?
I'm asking right now.
Nobody has said no way here.
Thank you. Okay, so that ends public participation for a second time. Alright, so we're on number three. All right, so we're on number three.
Oh, I'm sorry, doctor. Mr. President, I'd like to accept the council meeting minutes for March 2nd, 2020, accept the treasurer's report for March 2020, accept the police attorney's report for April 2020, accept the fire chief's report for April 2020, accept the inspection department's report for April 2020, and accept the public works department report for April 2020.
Five seconds.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gerard. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number four.
President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the ordinance establishing limited parking on the portion, on a portion of Pine Street.
Five seconds. Second by Mr. Crotrochi. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize agreement to modify the non-union, non-uniform union agreements.
Five seconds. Second by Mr. Pezzin. Questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yeah, I have a, I think a couple of comments and a question. The first comment I have is that, excuse me, is that I'm not in agreement with this, this modified non-union agreement. I mean, non-uniform union agreement. And the first, the first reason why is I'm not okay with it is because this modification happened with just our council president. Our council president also has a son-in-law that is a borough worker. To me, there's a direct conflict of interest in somebody who is making the decision of what's going to be modified. This is not something that was brought in front of the council. This is not something that was talked about in a committee of other council members. This was something that was done over this pandemic break with just council president De Giuseppe and his people. To me, this, this contract is just something, it doesn't make any sense. I mean, we have, right now, we have two part-time workers. Where's the third one? Why is the, why is Rosie not included in this?
She's allowed to stay as a part-time worker. And if we want to hire her full-time, we could put that on the agenda maybe next month.
Okay, so you plan on hiring her as a full-timer? All right. And the problem that I-
You've done a good job.
Okay. And the problem that I have with this modification is that if you have, right now, we have three people who are now going to be full-time, right? And there's a stipulation in this contract that says that by June 1st, those people are not going to be, if you're hired before June 1st or June 2nd, one of those days, you're pretty much going to be guaranteed a job with no layoff clause. And to me, I do not like that idea because what you're doing is you're, you're forcing the taxpayer to have no leeway. And especially in a time now with this pandemic, we don't know what's going to happen in, you know, the next three, four months, a year of what the money's going to look like. We're already not able, we already have to, every year, go to the county to get five extra mills for our general fund. All we do is complain about not being able to maintain the police department and the racks, and money's running, you know, out all over the place. We have no money. But we're going to lock ourselves into having three new full-time officers. Listen, if we need the help, and I trust that Mr. Dillon is, what he's saying, if we need the help, I know that he's, he's tough and he's watching the money. So, I don't understand, if we need that help, let's give them, if, let's give them the job June the 3rd. That gives us the ability, listen, we're going to hire you full-time, give you that job, but guess what? We have the ability, if we need to, to lay you off. I have no problem with something like that. But I'm not going to agree, again, to another no-layoff clause. Once you continue the no-layoff clause, then you're, you're sticking yourself. And, and you have no, you have, you have nowhere to go because you have to buy by this contract. So, that part of it, I'm totally against. And then it says here in part D, when a non-supervisory employee and a supervisory employee need to work together for the better efficiency of the operation of the borough, so long as the other provisions of the paragraph are not viol-, I don't know what that means.
Do you want us to explain it, Dave?
No, you have to-
This is when Mr. Salerno comes in.
Yeah, it's, it's part of another paragraph. So, paragraph 29 in the, in the non-supervisors contract now says that a supervisor cannot do a non-supervisor's job unless there's three, there were three exceptions, okay? This is just the fourth exception. So, now what it does, it gives us the flexibility that if it's for the better efficiency of the operation of the borough, a supervisor can do the work of a non, of a non-supervisor. That was a concession by the union to us to give us more flexibility.
Right.
And that same paragraph is in the supervisors' contract.
So, which is, okay, it is, I see how that gives us flexibility. Now, we are talking about going up to 15 full-time workers.
Not up to, we already have, how many we have now?
16, I think.
16.
How do we have, we have 16 full-time workers right now?
Right, one's on workers' comp.
And one just retired.
This includes supervisors, too.
Okay, so why can't we, would we be okay with telling, listen, we will hire these three full-time if we need them. Why can't we wait till June 2nd or June 3rd so that way we have the ability as a council to make those-
That's not part of the agreement.
They won't agree to that.
Well, then, I thought that our hard stand, when we, the last time that we were in there, we made a hard stand. Listen, either you're, you're going to not be flexible, or you're going to go home. That's what we talked about.
They won't agree to give us part-timers. This is what this is all about.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying.
So, that's what we got. We got unlimited part-timers now.
I understand, but we got limited part-timers for-
Unlimited. Not limited.
Yeah, unlimited part-timers, which we're not going to need anyway because if, these are the 15, we have-
All right, go ahead.
We might need them. We might need them.
Okay, but what I'm saying is this, you're, you're putting us in the spot, and I'm not comfortable with our council president who has a son-in-law that's a borough worker making the decision.
I was, I was on that committee also.
There's no-
He wasn't talking about the committee. He's talking about over the pandemic when he made the modification. He said it was him-
Tell me this came about, Tony. We talked about this last month.
No, I'm only repeating what he said. It's what he said. What do you want me to do?
He's not going to agree because what he says back there, he doesn't want anybody to think he gave us the authorization.
Ralph, here's, here's-
I was on that committee. We met with the union.
Ralph, I mean Lou. That's not what, that's not what he said. I'm just telling you what he said at the meeting.
It's what you hear. It's what you want to hear.
Lou, he said at the meeting. Do I have to prove you wrong again?
Oh, please. What do you mean again? You have never proved me wrong yet.
Yeah, dude, when you lied about finding that paperwork on Dillon's desk, that you happened to be in there and saw it. You don't remember that lie?
It wasn't a lie, that's why I saw it.
But then you said-
We got a motion on the floor. That was two years ago.
It's still lying.
You lied about your not having permits. Lou. Oh, we don't talk about that.
No.
We don't.
Oh, we're going to talk about stuff, talk about the lawsuit you got for not renting to somebody, a woman and her, and her child. I mean, if you want to bring up stuff that you learned about.
He wants to do something nice for your family. Go online and read about that. Wants to do something nice for your family. Come on, Tony, finish it, finish your question.
Because it's not political.
All right, finish your question, please.
So, that is the question. I'm not, I'm not okay with it for that reason.
I see you're not okay with it. That's fine, that's why you vote.
Ralph, this is what we, we're supposed to talk about it as a council to show points. I don't want to pigeonhole us into having to keep three full-timers.
We understand 100% what you're saying.
All right, thank you.
What else you have?
For that one, that's it.
That it?
Yep.
Because your son-in-law is, is on here, Ralph, and if you do vote yes, you will have a lifetime job with no-
No, they already have that. I don't understand. They already have that.
A lifetime job?
Our crew already has a no-layoff policy.
About these next three is what I'm talking about.
About the next three, and that's what they want. What does your son-in-law have to do with this position?
I, I'm sorry, I thought- What does he have to do with this position? Is that he is a, he works for the borough.
I thought everybody was included in there before June 1st, that's all.
They already have it.
Okay, thank you.
You don't see, yeah, that is, you don't see that connection at all?
I hear you, I was talking.
Oh, the connection is that your son-in-law worked for the borough.
Right.
You were the only one that made the decision that, we're in talks with the union, that your son, your son-in-law is a union member for it.
Let me try that.
That's nothing.
You have no clue what you're talking about.
I'm just asking. To me, it sounds like-
About a no-layoff clause.
Not asking, you're making statements.
Let me tell you about the no-layoff clause for about the, you've been here nine years.
They are statements.
It's really a shame how misinformed you really are about everything. Nine years, and you still don't know, we settled three contracts. Then no-layoff clause was put in way before we ever got here.
Are you, you're not listening to the point that I'm making?
So, what does that have to do with anything? You're talking about my son-in-law.
Because you are the only person that negotiated this modification. You said it yourself.
No, I negotiated it with a couple employees, and I ran it by several council people, including you at the March 2nd, when we were in executive session.
And what did I say?
You said to Jim, either, we either get what we want or send them home.
That's it.
Okay, so we got what we wanted.
No, we didn't. We didn't get what we wanted.
All right, you're right.
I was aware that the police officers have a no-layoff clause. I was unaware that the non-uniform also, is that correctly had it?
Reason they have a no-layoff clause-
They had a no-layoff clause?
Had it for years before we got here.
Let me tell you why they have a no-layoff clause.
I didn't know that.
Because at one point, when there was negotiations, the previous manager, no fault to him, he was doing what's right for the borough, would tell them, look, we're either going to have to lay people off, or we're going to have to, you know, we can't give you what you want. So, apparently, they went to federal court and got a no-layoff clause put in the bargaining agreement for non-uniform and police.
Yeah, I just thought it was the union.
So, why would the union want to give us part-time help when we're not guaranteeing them a minimum manpower and not protecting the people that they want hired? I mean, it makes no sense why they would do that.
Because, this is why, because you do it for the residents, the taxpayers, that we're already, we're already the highest tax municipality in the county.
You had a lot of input into budgets, I understand.
Listen, we have zero input into budgets. You do, you do a miraculous thing every year. You ask for all these suggestions, you listen to none, and you've balanced the budget. You're a magician.
You're a, what else do you have? We got a motion on the floor, and we have a second, correct?
Roll call vote, please.
Do you want to do them individually, or you want to do them?
Roll call, yeah, that's individual.
All right, let's start with, who's the, Mara Dockerty.
How we got to do five?
It's number five, I'm sorry. So, all those in favor?
No, I want a roll call for this vote, please.
Roll call vote. All right, Mr. Gerard.
No.
Mr. Devine.
No.
Mr. Pezzin.
Yes.
Mr. Gorman.
Yes.
Mr. Crotrochi.
Yes.
Mr. De Giuseppe.
Absolutely.
Motion carries. Number six. And you want, want to do them, whoever made the motion, let's do them individually.
Okay. Mr. President, I can make a motion, authorize the hiring of Mara Dockerty, effective May 11th, 2020.
Second by Mr. Pezzin. Questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yeah, I have, just for the record, I have, this is not a personal vote, this is just the idea that they will not, as a council, make any changes to this modification, that they would be hired full-time after the June 2nd date that is put into the contract. Otherwise, I would hire all three of them full-time if that was done, so.
Okay. You do realize that the, the union will not modify-
You have a question?
He doesn't. I have a question for you.
Oh, well, you can't do that, you got to go through the chair.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Roll call vote. I'm sorry, who, who made the- Mara Dockerty. Louis, second by Mr. Pezzin. Okay, Mara, Mr. Gerard.
June 2nd, uh, May 11th, no.
That's a no.
June 2nd, yes. Right now, no.
So, it's a no. Mr. Pezzin.
Yes.
Mr. Gorman.
Yes.
Mr. Crotrochi.
Yes.
Mr. De Giuseppe. Absolutely. Motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, authorize the hiring of Steve Boji III, effective May 11th, 2020.
Second by Mr. Pezzin. Questions or comments? Roll call vote. Mr. Gerard.
June 2nd, yes. May 11th, no.
No. Mr. Devine. Uh, Mr. Pezzin. Mr. Gorman.
Yes.
Mr. Crotrochi.
Yes.
Mr. De Giuseppe. Yes. Motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, authorize the hiring of Steffi Di Leo, effective May 11th, 2020.
Second by Mr. Gorman. Questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yes, do we have, Mr. Dillon, do we have any applicants for any of these jobs?
Yes.
Where they-
And we had interviews.
We had interviews?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We interviewed six people on Monday. Any other questions?
No.
Roll call vote. Mr. Gerard.
June 2nd, yes. May 11th, no.
Mr. Pezzin.
Yes.
Mr. Gorman.
Yes.
Mr. Crotrochi.
Yes.
Giuseppe.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, number seven.
President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the appointment of Dr. Frank M. Di Tilio to conduct a medical assessment of a former police officer for police pension eligibility purposes.
Second by Mr. Crotrochi. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Oppose? Number eight.
President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize extending the base amount of real estate taxes from June 30th, 2020 to July 30th, 2020. The penalty period will be effective July 31st, 2020.
Second by Mr. Crotrochi. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Oppose? Number nine.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve Guadenzia request to modify the conditional use approval granted January 27th, 2014, to allow increase in the number of inpatient beds from 30 to 34.
I have a second. No second? Mr. Gerard. Questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yeah, I know that the chief has had some concerns. Say it again?
Doesn't have anything to do with Guadenzia, it was the other one. It's Lenape Valley, you had a problem.
Oh, okay. So, what, what would, how would this affect us as a, as a borough? What would be the negative effects of adding four beds to their?
I would say it wouldn't have any negative effect. I would say it wouldn't have any negative effect, it's supposed to help the community, the type of work that they do, alcohol, whatever.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Oppose? Number ten.
President, I'd like to make a motion to consider awarding handicap curtsies to NJS Concrete the amount of $90,175.50, which represents the base bid, and an alternative number two.
Five seconds. Second by Mr. Girard, questions or comments?
Yeah, I got a question.
Go ahead.
What happened to the first bid, didn't we have one that was?
They didn't, you want to explain it? They didn't meet the requirements of the RCO, the Responsible Contractors Ordinance, according to the, to union representatives, even though prior year, they were our low bidder, and they were permitted under the RCA, RCO to work.
Okay, gotcha.
And they withdrew, they withdrew, so we had to post the second one for the 30-day review period, that review period was up a couple of weeks ago, so we're clear.
Okay, good.
All right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Oppose? Number 11.
President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertisements, advertisement of the ordinance to amend the borough's responsible contractor ordinance.
Five seconds. Second by Mr. Gorman, questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yeah, I didn't see, I didn't see the amendment to this ordinance in our packet, is that's-
We didn't do it yet.
It's an appetite, yeah.
Oh, what are we, what are we advertising to change then? What part of it?
Mr. Dillon, why you explain why you put this on the agenda? The main reason, the county commissioners have just amended their ordinance and has set a amount of $250,000 as the level, meaning anything over $250,000 would be covered under the RCO, anything underneath the RCO, under, anything underneath 250 would not be covered by the RCO ordinance. So it's recommended that we change our current level from 75 to 250, which brings us in conformity with the county.
Okay, just makes it, that would just make it easier for us to get somebody-
I think it would give the opportunity for our residents even to bid on these jobs.
Gotcha.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Oppose? Number 12.
Mr. President, I'd like to authorize the filing of an application for funding for purchase of new ambulance in the amount of $125,000 emergency funding through community development block grants.
Five seconds. Five seconds, second by Mr. Girard, I'm sorry. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Oppose? Number 13.
President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a resolution for the filing grant in the amount of $180,000 for Otter Street Fields Rain Garden and Vegetated Swale. Borough 15% match is $31,975.
Second by Mr. Catrochi, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Dillon, could you explain a little bit what's going to happen over there?
Jim, you want to do it? There was, I'm looking for the email, it's a packet, I believe, from the engineer, this is one of the federal requirements, in terms of your-
That was the one that she talked about.
And we tried to do the minimum cost, and even with that, it's over 200 and some thousand, so we're still trying to get a grant. All right, I want to adjourn this meeting, yeah, because I have a couple of things. Okay, all those in favor? Oppose? All right, before we adjourn, with this pandemic, and nobody knows how long it's going to go on for, I would like to suspend the rules and add to the agenda that we're giving the manager an opportunity to hire up to six part-time employees, whether it's street and highway or secretarial work, whether we need him to help get, you know, stuff done in the summer or whatever, but he has the flexibility now that we don't need to come in, and I think the hourly rate is $15 an hour. Somebody first, because that's the rate, Jim, or is it $17? I'd take part-time, between $15 and $17. So if somebody makes a motion, Mrs. Louis, make a motion, suspend the rule. All those in favor? Oppose? I can reduce to the agenda.
Now, there can be a motion to authorize the manager to be able to hire up to six part-time employees at a rate between $15 and $17 an hour.
To be used wherever we need him.
Wherever we need him.